We should be live.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of April 22, 2021. Please note that this meeting will be conducted virtually. All board members, staff, and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identified in the public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raise hand feature in Zoom or by pressing star nine if participating by telephone to indicate that you would like to be recognized to speak. Meeting documents have been made available on the township's civil clerk website in accordance with the public meeting notice. And with that, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, liberty, and justice.
Get this signal synchronized, guys.
Yeah. Please be advised that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 annual meetings schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to Public Law 2020 comma C-11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically, and pursuant to the local finance notices recently established in the state of New Jersey. That may have a roll call of board members followed by roll call of board and township professionals.
Mr. Chicorelli, Mr. Pezen, Mr. Scobo, and Deputy Mayor Delkor are absent. Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Present.
Mr. Santa Romita?
Here.
Mr. Hesag?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Hori?
Here.
Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Ms. Beam?
Here.
And Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Thank you. It's a very light agenda. We do not have any considerations, meeting minutes, nor resolutions, and there is no planning board business. So with that, I will open up from business from the floor for matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, Mr. Delkor, I believe this is in.
Please. I did join. Yes, I did join. Thank you.
We're joined at 7:37. Okay. So I'm opening up to the public for matters not on the agenda. If you're in the Zoom meeting, please raise your virtual hand or by pressing star nine, and I do see a virtual hand. So please allow participant in. And please state your name and address for the record. And.
Good evening. Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey, and Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camplain Road. I have a question in regard to the the board members. Does each board member have to take an oath when they become a board member?
Yes.
What kind of oath is that? What is that? What is that?
The same oath that every other public body requires.
Okay, which, so it's exactly the same wording for every single oath?
With the exception of the office that they're holding or the governing body that they're going to be serving on. Otherwise, the text is exactly the same, at least in Hillsborough.
Okay, when the mayor and one of the committee men is a board member, do they have to take that oath also as a board member?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. During the last planning board meeting, Sun Power was the applicant, and I had asked if they had gotten any kind of a variance in regard to the size of the property, and I was told no, that it's five point something acres. But I had stopped at the planning board office and looked at the records there. And what is there currently, the building, the Comcast building, apparently was approved as a conditional use because the property, anything else in that zone requires 50 acres. So the Sun Power application is for a property that already has something existing there, and then to put another 1,100 solar panels. That's why it had to encroach onto the 75-foot safety area. So how can that be, how could that have been a hardship for the applicant when they were cramming in something onto a piece of property that already had something on there and that already had been given a break as far as how much land is required? So now, now they got a waiver from a safety requirement, which is pretty scary.
They did not get any waivers from any safety requirements. It was regards to a buffer.
And the buffer, as stated, the number of the code Hillsboroughs, it says that it's to address safety, that there has to be that much distance. So that's a safety feature, and that was given a waiver because the applicant is claiming a hardship because there wasn't enough property to cram on 1,100 solar panels.
I believe it would not have made the project, and their hardship was because it would not have made it feasible.
Why is that even allowed? When that property, when the requirement in that zone is 50 acres and the Comcast building sitting there is on five point something acres, and now they want to cram in even more stuff, which now is creating a safety problem.
David, I'll let you address. Yeah, sure. This application was heard at the planning board's last meeting, and all the testimony and justification were presented at that time.
Right, and I had asked a question about how much land, if they had gotten a break on, how much land is required? And I was said, no, because it's five point something acres. But that was a break given to Comcast because that zone requires 50 acres. So now also, looking at the records at the planning board, I see that there is a completed verbatim transcript, and that verbatim transcript doesn't show that there was another waiver asked for, waiver from that, I don't have the number in front of me, but that is for purpose of safety.
Do we already have transcripts available?
No.
With that, with that, all of the records with that application, there is a verbatim transcript from the November 5th meeting.
Okay, well, it was continued last week.
It wasn't continued. Mr. Chairman, they came back for amendment to the application, and that transcript is not completed.
There will be a second verbatim transcript added to that, to those records?
At some point, yes.
Okay, and so I guess that, being that no one objected to it, that the pipeline officials are in agreement that that waiver is acceptable based on the fact that no one, no one from the pipeline company was at the meeting or objected to it, then that waiver of that feature is agreeable to the pipeline officials.
In the absence of hearing something from the pipeline, otherwise, yes.
Okay, so they're okay with it. All right, my next question is in regard to the Sherman property, Block 86, Lot 21. Have Hillsborough's officials sold that property yet to the developer?
No.
Is there any information on what is, what's going on with that property right now?
It's currently in negotiations between the township and the redevelopment regarding some issues that are not for public discussion.
Okay, and that Block 86, Lot 21, was divided into two parcels. I had some records somewhere, I don't have it in front of me, that the second parcel, besides the one for RPM, the second parcel also has a developer that's going to be doing something on that property?
Yes.
And when is that going to be disclosed?
When we finalize the application for their development.
Okay, and what's happening with the Royce Brook, Royce Brook properties, property, that golf course community? Is there anything going on with that?
No.
No. Okay, I have a question that maybe could be answered once we, looking at the ordinance, because there is information here on the ordinance regarding monitoring that the Hillsborough Township has to provide annual reporting of affordable housing trust fund activity. Is that the money that was used to purchase the Sherman property, Block 86, Lot 21?
I think, ma'am, and I don't mean to jump in, Mr. Chair, but I think, ma'am, that we're going to discuss the ordinance, and this is supposed to be for matters that are not on the agenda?
Okay, well, Block 86, Lot 21, isn't on the agenda, so I thought I would ask that question before I get told that that's not part of the ordinance.
You're not asking about the Sherman site, ma'am. You're now asking about Royce Brook.
And monitoring.
And the monitoring, and the answer to that is that'll be addressed in the discussion regarding the ordinance, if so, if it is so desired.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to provide comment to the board? I see none. So we are moving on to considerations of ordinances. We do have one this evening. Ordinance 20-21-06, it's an ordinance of the township Hillsborough, amending Chapter 188 of the Hillsborough Township Code, entitled Land Use Development, Article 7, entitled Affordable Housing, to address the requirements of the Fair Housing Act and Uniform Housing Affordability Controls Regarding Compliance with the Township's Affordable Housing Obligation. And with that, Eric or David would like to?
I think it's me.
Oh, sorry. You're over on the right side.
If they want to go for it.
Actually, we'll let Jen start.
We'll let Jen start, okay.
So.
By way of introduction, Jen, hope people know who you are.
So, my name is Jennifer.
Consultant.
Yes.
Several years.
I've been the Township's Affordable Housing Consultant for a number of years and have been working closely with David and Eric, as well as the governing body in ensuring that the township satisfies their affordable housing obligation as determined right now by the Superior Court of New Jersey. One item that's required in the regulations is for every town to adopt an affordable housing ordinance. You in Hillsborough had an affordable housing ordinance that had been on the books for a number of years because the town has been participating in the affordable housing process, you know, used to be through COA. We were, the township was always, or has been for the past several years in front of the court. So there was an affordable housing ordinance on the books, but this has been updated at the direction of the township settlement with Fair Share Housing Center and the Superior Court of New Jersey. We're obligated to adopt this as part of our settlement, but it's also in the regulations. And what this ordinance is, and I know that it's quite comprehensive and the number of pages long, is really just the regulatory obligations, and it enables the township to enforce their affordable housing requirements in terms of, you know, construction schedule, in terms of percentage of low to moderate income units, percentage of low-income units, how the town has to keep track and ensure that each unit maintains its affordability status over time. So it's really just the regulatory framework by which Hillsborough ensures compliance with the plan and the settlement in front of the court, that has been approved by the court. So, I mean, I wasn't really planning on going through every one of these items line by line. I know you guys are probably very disappointed by that fact. But basically, you know, this is a lot of the statutorily required language that each community is obligated to adopt and incorporate in their ordinance. Nowhere in this ordinance is there a recommendation to rezone any properties or anything of that nature. This is really just like the 10,000-foot requirements that we have to follow in order to make sure you sustain compliance over time. And that's being summarized in a nutshell.
I will briefly state further, Mr. Chairman, that as Jen has indicated, this is one of the requirements that the township has in order to meet its compliance obligation subsequent to the fairness hearing, which approved the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. There will be a couple of others coming down the road, but initially, this has, is a requirement. I will indicate also for the record that both Fair Share Housing Center and the Special Court Master Elizabeth, Court Master Elizabeth McManus have reviewed this ordinance and have approved it and have recommended that be introduced, and hopefully, depending on the boys' recommendations, considered and adopted by the governing body in Meg.
I think the only other thing, Mr. Bernstein, is that it's important to note that this is not that public hearing on the ordinance. This is simply a determination on whether or not the ordinance is consistent with the township's planning documentation. The public hearing will be held before the township committee. I'm not 100% sure what the date is.
May 11th.
May 11th. Yeah, I should have known that. Dave told me that when I first got on the call. So while I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have about the ordinance, it's important to note that this is not the hearing on accepting the ordinance. It's simply a determination on whether or not it's consistent, and I would submit to the board that it is consistent with your master plan, the fair share, court-approved settlement agreement, and your planning documents within the township.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maskey, any additional commentary?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, board members, anyone have any questions, comments?
Ms. Beam, is this ordinance any different than standard practice that neighboring towns offer?
No, it's, it's, so basically, what we had to do in changing what you already had on the books was to kind of update the information in here based upon the change in regulations over time. But every town that participates in this affordable housing project, process, excuse me, is obligated to adopt ordinance, you know, basically stating exactly the same thing.
I might point out, Mr. Chair, that our current ordinance, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, is at least 10 years old.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's antiquated.
So, and it talks about things that can't do, such as growth share.
Right, so I'm assuming this is getting, we're getting, this ordinance is to be consistent with changes in state statutes.
That's correct.
Consistent with state statutes, regulations, and the current situation.
Board members.
Chair, I have two questions. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's curdemic. The first one is, how does the ordinance deal with integration of units within a complex? Does it, does it describe that they're kind of spread out? Does it, is that what the municipality's desire would be? Or does it not, does it not speak at all in terms of the integration of affordable units within a market rate project?
It doesn't specifically enumerate that they have to be distributed throughout, you know, the project, like a couple of units in each building. What it does speak to is the percentages of the number of affordable units, the minimum percentages of affordable units. I can tell you that through our work over the course of the past several years, we've managed to get higher set-aside so we can reduce the overall number of projects. But it gives you the minimum percentages, the number that has to be low income, the moderate income, but it doesn't speak specifically to how they get distributed in an individual project. That would be, honestly, that's, you know, up to, ultimately up to you guys when it comes down to, you know, they come, you know, coming in for a site plan subdivision application on how they're distributed. I will say that although way back when, the theory was to put a couple of units in each building, it's becoming more and more difficult to finance a project of that nature. So they do tend to be kind of a little bit more grouped. But I will say that with the exception of a couple of projects which are 100% affordable in the plan, most of the projects within the township are inclusionary, and the units would be kind of somewhat distributed among the overall project. But this does not specify any obligation to do so.
So that's really helpful. So from your experience, because it is not specifically called out, are we disadvantaged? Or because it's not called out, we have the flexibility, and as applications are brought to us, we're not precluded from, one way or another, desiring a full integration or not?
So I don't think you're disadvantaged because I don't, it wouldn't make any further stipulation in any other community. So this is pretty standard language. You know, I would say that each of the developments that come before you are subject to a developer's agreement between the developer and the township because of the nature of the court proceeding. And in certain instances, it's specific, and in other instances, it's a little bit more flexible. So I would say it's more, a more of a case-by-case circumstance before you guys. And, you know, you're obviously, you have the opportunity to ask a developer before you, you know, what their rationale and reason is as to how they've laid out their project. You know, it's not quite as open as a traditional subdivision that comes before you that doesn't have the court obligation associated with it. But there is some flexibility that's afforded to you in talking about how it's laid out, how any affordable housing looks architecturally, those types of things. That's kind of still left up to you as a board.
I will, I will indicate, Mr. Emick and Ms. Beam and Mr. Maskey, correct me, that of those projects that have received developers' agreements through the litigation process, if they are not 100% affordable or providing a 100% affordable option off-site, I believe they are pretty much distributed within the existing building or buildings. We don't have a lot of projects that have multiple buildings. You don't see a lot of this now. Anyone who comes before this board, who is not one of that group, who comes before the board seeking approval of residential development of greater than five affordable units going forward.
Five marketing units.
My marketing, thank you, Dan, is up to the board as to how they want them addressed, depending on how the applicant comes in. If the applicant comes in and says, I'm going to build six single-family homes, of which, one of which will be affordable, then obviously there is no integration. If they're talking about a building where there are six units in, then obviously, if it's only one building, there will be integration. The only place where it becomes an issue is multiple buildings, depending upon the number of units. But at least for this group, I believe that if they are not doing either in strictly 100% projects themselves or they are providing off-site 100% affordable, they are pretty much integrated.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. And Eric, this one, this last one, this last question I have for, is for you. In 188-125, in the applicability section, small letter b, it says the set-aside shall be at 20%. Does it, is it helpful? And then the later sentence says, but the township shall not be precluded from requiring higher.
All right.
Is it helpful to, sorry, go ahead.
Go finish, Kurt.
Yeah, I was going to say, is it helpful if we say shall be a minimum of 20%?
Well, I will indicate to you all that the language in that ordinance is that the behest of the Fair Share Housing Center and the court master, we actually wanted, for those of you who are aware, we were successful in generally, not everyone, but almost everyone, getting a 24% set-aside. And we got a 24% set-aside, one because we wanted to reduce the number of projects, until we wanted to reduce the number of units across the board. When we went to Fair Share Housing and the master and said, we would like to codify the 24%, we were told, no. This is what you get now, the 20%, the magic to the 20, and I understand, actually, it's a 20 and 15.
Right, for a rental project, typically, it's a 15% set-aside. For sale, it's 20.
And that magic number comes from Justice Levesque's decision from the Supreme Court in 2015. I will tell you that I can count on one hand, I believe, across the state, Jen does this also across the state, as do I, can probably count on one hand the number of towns who got a set-aside greater than 20.
Yeah, it's definitely very low, the number.
Yeah, I, yeah, sorry, I'm just hanging on the, instead of being at 20%, should it be a minimum of 20%? Does that help us?
It doesn't. It doesn't, actually, it does because you could be asked to go to 15 for sale, and even, the 20% does not matter what kind of properties they have, whether it's for sale or rental, it will be 20%. We have the right to seek a higher set-aside.
Yeah, okay, look, I trust your judgment. I just wanted to raise it.
No.
I think they're really good questions, honestly.
Yeah, and as I said, it's not from a lack of trying.
Yes, that's for sure.
I bet, I bet. You got a lot of bruises, I'm sure. Thank you. That's my two questions.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, I guess I will now ask for a motion to open to the public.
I'll make the motion open to public.
I'll second it.
Hey, we got a motion to second, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay, anybody, attendees, zoom, press your virtual hand or star nine if you're dialing in by phone. I do see one hand raised. It looks familiar. Please state your name and address for the record. You just put yourself unmuted. There we go.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville. I didn't know that I was, you continue to have it unmuted. First, who is, who is the woman who is speaking now? You're calling her Jen, Jen?
I am the affordable housing planner hired by the township.
Okay, what is your name? What is her name?
Jennifer Beam.
And who are you with?
Leona Savakian.
I'm sorry, who?
Leon S. Savakian.
Oh, okay. All right, so I heard statement made that the ordinance was approved by the court master. Who's the court master? Elizabeth?
Elizabeth, Elizabeth McManus.
Okay, and by who else? Because I didn't catch that, just by the court master.
Fair Share Housing Center.
Fair Share Housing Center. Okay. But now, who drafted this ordinance, since it's being approved by someone? Who drafted this ordinance?
So it was a combination of myself with David Maskey and Eric Bernstein. We kind of put it together, and then we sent it over to the court and to Fair Share for their review and comment. And it went back and forth for probably, what, Eric, eight months?
I would indicate, before you get confused, Ms. Jen, a sec, the court being the special court master, not the court.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so this went for approval to the court master, but not to the court?
No.
Yes?
That is correct. We did not.
That is correct. Okay, all right. Which, what was, what was the affordable housing ordinance prior to this one?
The one that's currently, the one that is currently in the township code.
Right, it's the same number. I mean, we did renumber once we got into it because there were sections that are no longer legal, like growth share. But it's in the township's ordinance currently.
Okay, so, but you have an ordinance number for that, so it's easy to look up?
No, well, section one, if you have a copy of the ordinance that's currently before the board, Ms. Jen. currently before the board, Ms. Janusak, you will find in section one and section two on the first page, the sections of the township code that are being deleted.
So that's just from the code. It's so does it say specifically that it's an ordinance regarding affordable housing?
Yes.
Yes, if you have the if you have ordinance 20-2021-06, you will find the sections of the code at the beginning of the ordinance after the whereas clauses that it will be eliminated when this if and when this ordinance is adopted.
Okay. Okay, I'll have to take a look at that. All right, so I have some questions of in regard to this ordinance. In the first paragraph, it says that that this creating a really realistic opportunity for producing a fair share of of affordable housing.
Yes.
For the third round. So how much affordable housing is Hillsborough required?
Well, that's not part of this ordinance. That would be the subject of a master plan, which is coming before this board, which will also have a public component. This ordinance doesn't stipulate the numbers, the projects, the, you know, where they're located. This is the regulatory obligation of the township to adopt the framework by which all these things are done.
Okay, so the second paragraph, it says that let's see, the declaratory judgment action.
That's that's how this process
ML 000900-15 is currently pending. What does that mean? It's currently pending?
We're still under the court's jurisdiction. In order to participate in the in the affordable housing process, the township had to enter declaratory judgment action before the Superior Court. That protects the town against builder remedy lawsuits and and those types of things. So we've been under the court's jurisdiction with respect to this round since 2015. We've been working with the various entities, Fair Share Housing Center, who has a seat at every table throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as the court-appointed master who Judge Miller relies upon to handle all of the technical aspects of this process. So we have to go through this process. We have to adopt all these things as required by the court before we can go back to them for a compliance hearing to show that we've done everything they've told us to do. So this is one of the steps that the court has told us to do.
Okay, Fair Share Housing Center. Is that a government entity?
No, it's a nonprofit affordable housing advocacy group that has been granted special dispensation by the Superior Court of New Jersey, and they are a party to every town's affordable housing process.
Actually, the Supreme Court of New Jersey.
Sorry, that's what I meant, Supreme Court.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Supreme Court of New Jersey gave them what kind of powers?
A sensibly a seat at every table of every municipality that has a declaratory judgment action pending or settled, which was over 300.
So so who who runs this Fair Share Housing Center?
They have their own, and there are a bunch of attorneys that are part of a nonprofit advocacy group. They're located in, I think Burlington County and Cherry Hill, and they are the affordable housing advocates. They have been in existence, you know, for many, many years, and they have been granted this power, so we have no choice but to deal with them. They have a website. You can look them up.
Okay. So, all right, let's see, there were there were more questions I had. So now COLA is implementing COLA is implementing regulations or being used, but wasn't COLA dissolved back in what, 2014? So why?
The entity itself was was not reappointed, but the regulatory requirements and standards still remain in effect.
As per the Supreme Court.
Okay. All right, so on the on page, well, I guess it's the second page, but page five, it says that beginning on July 1, 2020, on every anniversary of that date, the township shall provide annual reporting of its Affordable Housing Trust Fund activity. So has that been done for 2020?
We have we have been granted relief on that because we haven't had our compliance hearing. But the the court has been keeping track and through their special master on what has been transpiring. There will be a spending plan associated with the housing element Fair Share Plan that this board will initially consider, and then it will go to the Township Committee for endorsement in which, you know, what has been spent and what projected what projected expenses moving forward are anticipated through 2025. But that this ordinance only sets up the framework by which that happens. None of the details of that are incorporated into the ordinance, and I do want to also just stipulate again, this is not a public hearing on the ordinance. It's simply to determine consistency. The public hearing will be held at the governing body. So while a lot of these questions are very valid, I don't necessarily think that this is the right venue for it. This is just to determine if this ordinance is consistent. The public hearing will happen on May 11.
Okay, all right, well, because let's see. I'm looking at the agenda and it says consideration of ordinances and it says
Consideration in the planning board's role in consideration ordinances is stipulated in the MLUL under section 26 to determine consistency. They're not voting on the ordinance. They're voting on whether it's consistent. The public hearing is at the governing body. They're the only entity that has the right to enact ordinances. So all these questions, while very valid, probably should be kept until the public hearing before the committee on May 11. This is simply to determine whether it's consistent.
Well, some of the some of the board members asked questions on some of this stuff, so.
Ms. Janusak, do you have quite? Do you have questions specific to a section of the ordinance that is an whereas clause, is it a descriptive issue, or related to the ordinance itself?
Yeah, well, well, I have a question about about the reporting of the funds. So where where were those funds if that if this was not a requirement or the 2020 requirement wasn't done yet? So where would this information be regarding the?
All of the funds that are collected are in an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that's managed by the Finance Department in the township. They manage the fund, which is developer money. It's not tax taller. It's not taxpayer money. And and fees go into that fund that are managed by an account that the Finance Department manages. You know, anything that goes in and out of that fund have to be approved by the court. So that's why we're going to have a spending plan, which we have not presented at this time, which will identify the expenditures that have been made, projected revenues, et cetera. And so, you know, I understand what your concerns are, but this is this ordinance is just setting up the framework for it. None of the details that you're looking for are going to be found in this ordinance.
Okay, well, all right, well, just bear with me. I have another question. On page 30, item B.
What section?
Oh, I don't know. Hold on a second. Let me look. 188-139.7 Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay.
All right, item B. It says that that payments in lieu of onsite construction of a fraction of an affordable unit were permitted by ordinance where permitted by ordinance or by agreement with the township of Hillsborough. So what how how is that determined? Whether something has to be done by ordinance or we're just in agreement with the township will allow something like that?
So as I stated earlier, some of the developments that come before the board are subject to a developer's agreement. That's the agreement with respect to the township. Others, if a developer comes to the town with a proposal to build more than five units, which is not one of our affordable housing projects, they're obligated to provide us with 20% of those units as affordable. Sometimes 20% is not a round number. So let's say it's 12.5. So then they're going to provide 12 units and then they're going to pay the value of the the half of unit, because you can't obviously build a half a unit into the trust fund. That's what that means.
So some developers are giving given permission to build affordable housing and some developers would come in and say on their own that some of their units are going to be affordable housing?
Yep.
So, all right, so then the the question that has to be answered is exactly how much affordable housing is Hillsborough required to provide?
As I said earlier, that's not part of this order.
At the moment, Ms. Janusak, the amount that is in the agreement between Fair Share Housing Center and the Township of Hillsborough.
Which is which is which is which is what?
The exact number I don't have in front of me, but whatever is set forth in the agreement, that's the obligation that the township has.
And that's not, as I said,
Much of which has been built.
Yes.
Okay, so that agreement, all right, so in this ordinance, it says that the township entered into a settlement agreement, so that that settlement agreement is is available?
Yep.
I'm frankly shocked that you don't have a copy of it, but yes.
Oh, don't be shocked. Okay, so also under 188-124 definitions on page 29, it says for non-residential developments only, the developer shall also be provided with a copy of form, whatever. Why? Why would a non-residential development be included in this affordable housing ordinance?
Yeah, can you Chairman, I have to step away for a moment. I apologize.
So I can answer that, Mr. Chair. So the the municipal law requires non-residential development to contribute 2.5% of their assessed value into the trust fund. So that's why there's provisions in here for non-residential development. They're not providing units. They're providing money. And that's that's in the MLUL.
That's that's by the MLUL. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? I jumped around. Please let Ms. Gulliford in. There we go.
I'm really stressed, so stop.
Okay, so Susan Gulliford Hunt Club Road, I want to follow up on the previous question from I'm sorry, was it? I don't see him up here. On the distribution of the affordable housing. In this ordinance, is this distribution not included in the ordinance? And make sure I understand the answer correctly. The township can't require it via this ordinance, but they they can't build it into the ordinance, but they can require or request that a developer
To to answer quite simply, it is not included in the ordinance. It cannot be included in the ordinance because it's not a regulatory requirement. It has to, but if if the development, and I think Mr. Bernstein answered this to say if it's 100% affordable, obviously every unit is affordable. But if it's a if it's a 24% inclusionary project, which most of the most of the projects included in our plan are, there's no stipulation in any of the developer's agreement that would enable a developer to 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 state that they're not going to incorporate them throughout. So this ordinance cannot stipulate that, but the board can ask for it at the meeting and and should.
Okay, because I, Mr. Bernstein had to step away, I know, but I'm not sure if he would remember that I had a exchange with one of our developers several years ago where he insisted he was going to put all his affordable housing in one building because he could build it cheaper. And I remember pointing out that meant all the children, for example, like get off the school bus, all the kids in that development are going to know they're the, you know, poor kids or whatever, and that didn't seem fair.
And there's no there's no there's nothing that would require the town to accept that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say that all the years that I've been on the planning board, we have not had any buildings built that way that we've that we've done the last 10 years, so. And we're in inclusionary projects.
Well, maybe he ultimately decided to distribute them. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience there? I'll have the other two that haven't participated if they want to participate. And Ms. Janusak, one more try.
Yeah, I had a question on the statements that were just made that no development is is all affordable housing. Isn't the Sherman property supposed to be that?
That's not what he said. What he said was no inclusionary development that's come before the board has been developed in that manner. Obviously, 100% affordable projects are going to be 100% affordable.
Okay, so what so then what's the purpose of doing one 100%? And then you're saying that, you know, you don't want to have somebody stigmatized or something that they're
So the reason a town would do 100% affordable project is because it reduces the overall number of units a town is obligated to provide. If every every project was 20% or 25%, there'd been, you know, thousands more units as part of the overall compliance, which obviously is not is not desirable. But I just want to, again, can we bring it back to the ordinance? Because that's kind of what this is about.
Okay.
Okay. So with no further questions, I'm going to make a ask for a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. So with that, just going to allow board members one more. Any more questions or clarifications? Before I start to yell for Eric to get back to his desk.
Yes, we could just make a motion to adopt.
So the motion would be to find that the ordinance is substantially consistent with the town's master plan.
I'll make that motion.
Your ordinance that's in front of us, so. Mr. Mayor, you already made a motion. Okay. Mayor's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Senator Romita.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Amick?
Amick, yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Senator Romita?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. See you in a couple of weeks.
All right, so with that, we do not have anything else on the agenda. I do want to remind everyone next meeting is May 6. Mr. Maskey, I do believe we have
an applicant. That's the ever-going JSM at Hillsborough, also known as Cost Cutters, returning once again. And day 13, we have a courtesy review of a Board of Education project at the Sunny Mute School.
Great, perfect. All right, so as a reminder, you know, if anyone cannot make either meeting, please let the planning board as soon as possible. And with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Hashtag, second.
And we'll give it to Mr. Hashtag.
Yeah, give him some voice.
Thank you.
There you go. All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good weekend and see everyone again in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good one.